Mayor, that would have been in the previous policy and is being amended for the new policy. So whereas in the existing policy right now, the mayor would approve the educational opportunities that council members attended, under the new policy, council members would make those decisions. That section has been reviewed, thus allowing council members to choose the conferences and educational sessions that they would wish to attend.
So it's more of a deletion than an addition to this?
Correct.
Okay. In terms of council approving the revised -- can I go on?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. So in terms of council approving the revised policy 101, council remuneration. Creating individual account allocations for council members to access professional development meetings and event attendance. A new section has been added that includes that. And it's been updated to recognize the time commitment to attend local conferences, seminars, workshops, et cetera by providing for per diems. In the past, council members have not claimed per diems within the region for these activities. So those are kind of the two major components of the change to council remuneration.
Okay, any discussion or any discussion on the remuneration section? Seeing none, if you want to continue on.
Counselor approved the revised council remuneration review committee terms of reference. So we're moving forward with this committee, as you'll note, I think has three public members. And city advisory staff appointed by the city manager. Usually this committee gets to work, I guess, in the fall of the last year of the term of present council. And so that will move forward this fall and we'll get usually get a report before the end of 2012, early in 2013. That would create a remuneration, I guess, policy for the next council, i.e. the one in October 2013. And there's been no change to this with the exception of a couple of additions to the areas to be addressed, section of the terms of reference.
And just to speak to that as well, this is a little bit earlier than we've done in the past and the intent is that the, and actually in the terms of reference, the committee should be presenting its report before the end of 2012. It's specific about that and that'll ensure that any changes that this council wishes to make for the next council's remuneration will be publicized well in advance that anybody wishing to run for city council in the 2013 election would know what those changes were. So discussion and debate, Counselor Rice.
Thinking up in the third paragraph and down in the term paragraph, you may want to word it for the term beginning 2013. As you know, that the Minister of Municipal Affairs is committed to looking at four-year terms. And so you may want to for the term beginning in 2013 and that would save you from having to make a change later on.
Good point. If we wanted to be really sticky about it, we would say for the term after this term because the next term might not start until 2014.
That's right. And I thought about that.
So, yeah, I'm fine either way. I don't know if anybody feels that we need to change or if we need to make a motion on that, Counselor Rice. They're going to be done by the end of 2012. They're going to have a report by the end of this year right now, so.
Okay.
But I think the point is clear that we're not talking about this council.
Correct.
No further discussion on that point?
And finally, the council, in terms of the established, the implementation of the council member expense accounts will be set for July 1st, 2012.
Okay, Counselor Rice.
Want to go back to policy 100, if I may?
Sure. They're all together?
Well, he made them all together, so. I guess I'm uncomfortable with seeing the first three, AUMA, FCM, and Elected Officials' Education Program. And not necessarily even number three, but it seems to me we should have a separate fund. I guess I don't want to see council members mixing that, do I want to go to AUMA or FCM or do I want to go to this? Like, we should be encouraging everyone to attend those. Like, that should be a separate fund and then, you know, which would reduce each individual councillor's, you know, choice one. But I think that every member of council, these are just incredibly important organizations to the city and councillors should be encouraged to attend those.
Sure. Counselor Radver, do you want to speak to that?
I can. Thank you, Counselor Rice. Actually, in terms of the policy is the policy as it is, but operationally, as Jeanette shared with us at the committee, there are a couple of things that are outside of our expense accounts. And AUMA, council retreats, and trip to the ledge are examples of something that's outside of our expense account or in addition to our expense account. So that, I found that quite useful because then.
Okay, but that's not what's showing up.
Counselor Rice, the definitions, basically you could delete, under definition section, you could delete 1, 2, 3, and 4, and it would mean the same thing. Basically, it says that council members can go to conferences, workshops, and whatevers. It just happens that in the policy, they've enumerated some specific examples. This doesn't have anything to do with the council member expense accounts that are further on in the practice of the council member expense accounts. Administration has been careful to ensure that in particular AUMA, there's funds set aside for that, so all council members, no council member will ever be in a position of having to choose whether they go to AUMA or not. FCM, we did do differently because over the past number of terms, there are often people who choose not to go to FCM for different reasons and that can be a significant expense, so that council member may choose to go to another educational opportunity. So that one is separate. But AUMA, as Counselor Radver said, AUMA where we need everybody there to vote. And the legislature trips and the council planning sessions, of course, were all kept separately, so that there's never a situation where, as you said, a council member saying, geez, I don't know, I want to save my, I don't know if I can go to the planning session because I want to save my per diems until something else. That's not going to happen.
The other question, the other concern I had was, or just, I mean, I don't know if it's a correction, but under the city section, number one, there are no, there are no expenses or per diems to, for an appointment to the Alberta Municipalities Association. It's all covered by that association.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks very much. Counselor, so I see sort of down the row here, Counselor Radver, did you have anything that you wanted to respond to?
Nope, that covers the four components.
Okay, I'm going to move on. I see Counselor Wong down there, so we'll move through a couple. Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I have no problem with this except for, I guess, referring to it as an expense account because it has just a bad connotation to it.
Oh, yeah.
I guess that people tend to see expense accounts as being abused, you know? Take you out for lunch and put it on my expense account. And the public needs to know that this kind of fund isn't used for that. We don't take people out for lunch and pay for them on this account. It's not even possible to do that because the policy is very specific about it being for conferences, workshops, seminars, and things like that.
Thanks, Counselor Wong. Counselor Rice?
I just wanted to comment that I was really pleased, under the account guidelines, I was really pleased that what's been incorporated into that was all of the input that council certainly has put forward in the last couple of years.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radver, I think that was your last item of business from GGS. Did you have anything else you wanted to highlight?
No, thank you.
Okay, then I think we go on to our additional agenda items from our special public works meeting, committee meeting of this evening. Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council award tender T. 4555212 for the 105th Avenue Rehab Muscati Park entrance to Rico Construction in the amount of $2,340,440.58 excluding GST. As a lowest tender meeting specifications, and that funding be allocated from the 102nd Street Muscati Park entrance and 105th Avenue Rehab Muscati Park entrance program.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council award tender T. 4355212 for the 2012 Road Resurfacing Program to West Canseal Coating, Inc. in the amount of $525,620.48 excluding GST. As a lowest cost tender meeting specifications, and that the funding be allocated from the 2012 Surface Repair Program.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. So I believe that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence that we had to review tonight. We had no delegations and we have no notices of motion, so we'd go into council member reports and we'll start off with the Disabled Transportation Society. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, we just.
Want to get your microphone there?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yes, we had a meeting here earlier this week and we had a, some of the discussion that was brought up was, we had a cab at one time that the disabled transport people could use and it was taken off the road for a number of months and it'll be back on the road here fairly soon. It won't necessarily be a cab-type attitude. You have to book it two days in advance to take you to, say, the airport or somewhere else and that sort of thing. So it'll be, take three people at a time. But that's one of the highlights from the meeting that we had. And we just went over our budget and financials and that was pretty much it for that.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Next was Grand Spirit Foundation. Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Grand Spirit Management Committee was held June 22nd. Minister of Infrastructure Wayne Drysdale attended our meeting for the first half hour and we talked to him about some infrastructure needs, of course, relative to the Grand Spirit Foundation. And we talked a little bit about seniors and how it's within the Alberta Health portfolio and how that might work. And the response there was it's a work in progress. We'll know more in terms of how that's going to work probably into the fall. We received Myers-Norse Penney Audit Recommendations for Information. We received totals for the Lodge Assistance Program for 2012. And fourthly, we talked about seeking grant and seed funding to support planning for a new lodge in Grand Prairie. So our goal, we're beginning that planning and our goal is to be ready to take advantage of federal provincial capital funding opportunities as they present themselves. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radver. Mighty Peace Watershed, Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. On June 11th and 12th, I did a tour of the northwestern Alberta Peace River area, the watershed area, with the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. We had our regular board meeting in Manning and then what we did was we decided that the board needed to see, or needed to get a tour just to get an idea of the geographic area of our watershed. I felt it was really worthwhile because the tour provided some insight into the area that you can't really get without seeing it personally. I was never really too familiar with the geography up there until we drove through it. During the tour, we also let the different groups know that we're planning up to 15 public input sessions at the different municipalities throughout the fall. And we're going to split ourselves up so that not everyone has to attend all 15 of them, thank goodness, because it is quite a large area to cover. To give you an idea of where we went, we carpool to La Crete. We met with their Chamber of Commerce and then we received a tour of the area there and all the industry. Then we went to Fort Vermillion and met with the Mackenzie County Council as well as the museum staff in Fort Vermillion. We got a little bit of a history lesson and we also talked about how water was a major source of transportation back in the day when the province was being founded. Fort Vermillion sees themselves as one of the, one of the towns or the areas that's really, that was really important in the building of Alberta as a province because that's how the travelers got there. They traveled to the area and then they did, they branched out from there. We also traveled to High Level, met with some of the members of their council and looked at some of the industry there, had some meetings with their council members. I just wanted to send condolences to Mayor Peter Ernst, who was one of our tour guides. His daughter was one of the guards who was shot and killed in the incident at the U of A. It was really sad to hear that news shortly after we'd gotten back home. I'd like to just extend our condolences and hope that the family's able to get through this tragedy and cope with their loss. I have three other things to report, Mayor Given. June 13th, we had a Centre 2000 Board Meeting. On June 18th, I participated in the focus group for the United Way. And finally, on Sunday, June 24th, I brought greetings on behalf of council to National Aboriginal Day. Counselor John Crokin was there to support me. And I just wanted to congratulate Joyce Mirren, who works in the Human Resources Department at the City of Grand Prairie, who received an award at that celebration. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. So you're passing on your turn for council roundtable then? We'll just give your time to Counselor Rice.
Nope, sorry, yes. I am passing.
Counselor Monroe, you had PREA, Peace Region Economic Development Alliance.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a brief update on what PREA's been working on lately. They're in the midst of developing a local opportunity center up in Peace River. It's a region that would cover about 150 kilometers, made up of industry members such as Shell, Penn West, et cetera. It's, the center would solve employment, training, contractor support to apply for industry RFPs. And PREA would essentially become, I guess, an umbrella organization that oversees the running of the organization and would receive a 15% to 20% admin fee on that. This project is budgeted, or proposed budget on this is about $300,000 to $400,000. There are also project fund, this initiative would allow member communities such as ourself to contribute a set per capita fee, which we are already doing, and then be able to apply for the fund for projects that are specific to our community. A lot of details are still being worked out on that, but more information to come here in the next couple of months. They've also, also in the process of setting up an angel network. For those of you that may not know what an angel network is, it's just bringing together angel investors to business opportunities that might be out there and we're hoping that that'll be a good partnership with the Community Futures Organization. And then long-term focus closer to home here is a shippers' association. And this would be for, you know, regional shippers to take the opportunity to address any of the transportation opportunities and issues that are out here. So that's kind of what PREA's looking at these days and hopefully a lot more optimistic information to come in the future.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe.
Thank you.
And the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum, Counselor O'Toole?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I've just got a little update on the summer dinosaur programs that are being held at the Pipestone Creek River of Death Discovery Center. We have, starting June 16th to September 2nd, there's a dinosaur bone bed tour. Starts at Friday at 4:30 PM and there's another one at 5:30 PM. Saturdays and Sundays, they're at 10:30 and 3:30. You can join a trained tour guide on the adventure back into the dinosaur days to solve mystery of the dinosaur site where hundreds of dinosaurs died in one spot. Learn what animals and dinosaurs used to walk this very land 73 million years ago. It's a family-friendly tour designed for all ages to have fun, learn, be entertained, and enthralled in the fascinating world of dinosaurs. Tours are on a first-come, first-served basis with a maximum of 25 people per tour. We also have a family theater shows and they're from July 1st to September 2nd and they're held in the afternoon on Saturdays and Sunday at 2:00 PM. Enjoy the theatrical dino-themed plays this summer at Pipestone Creek Park. Our summer staff will have you rolling in your lawn chair while entertaining you about the past. And there are volunteer parts that are available. Then we also have exploration sessions Friday, Saturdays, and Sundays through June 16th to September 2nd. It's an informal session held throughout the day. Join our staff for a casual exploration center session where you can have the opportunity to examine ancient artifacts, fossils, geological wonders, and more. Look for dino enthusiasts with a table covered with fossils and artifacts that you'll know you're in the right place. Four exploration sessions will be offered, fossils, prehistoric trackways, dinosaur skin impressions, and the Aboriginal history. So that's some of the programs that the dinosaur initiatives got going. And I just got one more I'd like to talk about for the DTS. At that meeting that we held, we had a, about a 15-minute video on some of the new clamping systems that are going to be proposed for our new bus systems, new buses when they are ordered. It's a little bit more ergon dynamic, a little easier on the drivers and takes some of the workload off of, and making it a little bit safer as well.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So we'll move on to council roundtable and as a matter of fact, why don't we just start right there? Oh, Counselor Crokin, you did have for art gallery, excuse me, the art gallery of Grand Prairie, Councilor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. It'll be very short. I'm elected again as a member for 2012-13 on the art gallery board. I'm also appointed, so I'm probably serving as two people. The annual report, the one highlight is we're up from about 175,000 to over 200,000 visits. And that's, they're not broken down about county and city, but it's, the annual report is here. Just sorry to say we have a few little touch-ups before we can open to the general public. It's really beautiful. There's the Carmen Haxstedt, they have it in there, just dressing it up and I just can't remember, and Jim Stokes, his, they're set up there. So it'll be open soon. It's beautiful, but there's some paint touch-ups before we're actually handed over the official keys, so that was everything, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. So we will start with Counselor O'Toole first tonight for council roundtable and Counselor Wong doesn't get a turn. Counselor O'Toole?
Okay. Okay, I got a few things to talk about here. On June 12th, I joined many council members at the new city on 99th, which happens to be the new Protective Services Building, to thank Rhonda LeFave for 20 years of service. On the 14th, I attended New Alta Open House Customer Appreciation Day. This is a company that recycles oilfield fluids and waste and we're looking at maybe getting a tour of the facility as a council here in their future. I also attended my granddaughter's graduation at Aspen Grove. Yeah, I couldn't believe it myself. She's in kindergarten and she graduated into grade one, so it was a pretty historic day there. On the 14th as well, I attended a Travel Alberta Industry Relations meeting with a couple of directors there, discussed updates to our sport tourism and that was a well-received meeting. And on the 15th, I gave a proclamation reading to the elder abuse house that we have here in Grand Prairie and I just want to do a little presentation to our mayor. While I was giving the proclamation speech on behalf of the mayor and council, I was awarded the sash, the Métis sash. Now, this sash is the highest award that can be given to a non-Metis person and it's got a lot of honor to it. And I would like to just pass this on to Mayor Given if he could store this somewhere or display it in City Hall, be honored.
Thanks.
Yep. Angie Creer gave me this and she was quite pleased with the city and the council and she wanted to make sure that we were given that. Shortly after that, I attended Tabono, a year-end celebration. I also gave greetings on behalf of council and that was a pretty exciting day for a lot of young people that have turned their lives around. I got to thank the councillors that they have there, the volunteers, and the John Howard Society, yes, and the RCMP. On the 17th, I did something that I'm pretty excited about. I celebrated my dad's, with him, his 80th birthday with my family and was, didn't think we were going to make it this far, but turned out pretty good. And on the 18th, the day after, we received, my father received 50-year award for being a member of the Knights of Columbus. It meant a lot to him and it means a lot to us. On the 19th, I attended the Aquiterra AGM meeting. Good things are coming out of there in the next couple of years. They've kind of gave us a bit of a synopsis of what they plan on doing and it looks very positive to all the shareholders and share, well, shareholders in the Aquiterra. On the 21st, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Annual Golf Tournament. I was a guest of the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum and I'm glad it was a best ball, but we did good. And on the 22nd, I attended the opening of the new Walmart Supercenter. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 134th Supercenter in Canada. They employ over 300 employees, looking for more. And, yeah, it was a red-letter date. They actually took over some of the existing Zeller stores that were not taken over by Target that day as well. And I also, later that day, I opened tenders for the 68th Avenue Lights. Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. June 12th, I attended the Montreux's, I guess, walkway consultation with the consultants and staff and stakeholders. And I attended the Goodwill Industries of Alberta inaugural awards night where Counselor Rice brought greetings from ourselves, did a great job. June 14th, I attended the GPRTA Board Meeting and the Travel Alberta Reps Meeting and I attended the 132nd Avenue Functional Study Open House. June 15th, represented the mayor at the annual Chamber Council Roundtable Session. And Jeanette was my able support at that meeting. June 19th, I went to the Reading University BBQ Lunch Fundraiser and then later attended the Aquiterra Shareholders Meeting as well. June 20th, I did a tender opening for a video conferencing system. On June 22nd, I guess I joined Mayor Given and Counselor O'Toole at the Walmart Supercenter opening and ribbon cutting. And yesterday on the 24th, later in the day, I attended the Aboriginal Day celebrations at Muscati Park. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Radver. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the morning mixer put on by the Chamber of Commerce at 9:10, put on by 9:10 here in Grand Prairie. Very well, very good breakfast and met a lot of neat people there. June 14th, I dodged a few bullets at the 132nd Avenue Functional Study. There's a few excited landowners in that neighborhood there, so engineering departments got their work cut out for them. I attended a Prairie Paths nomination committee meeting and I made a proclamation declaring June 21st National Aboriginal Day in Grand Prairie on behalf of Mayor Given. And I was really excited also to attend my grade, my daughter's grade, my daughter's kindergarten graduation. Time flies. Thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On June 12th, I also celebrated with Rhonda LeFave for 20 years and it was a unique cake. It was a cupcake cake, so you got to take a whole cupcake and couple to go. Congratulations, Rhonda. On the 14th, I also attended the New Alta Pig Roast Lunch. Thanks again to Mike Richardson, Northeast District Manager, and like Counselor Kevin was saying, that we should get a tour out there. On the 15th, I also attended the city's health and safety barbecue for all staff at the Dave Bar Arena. And cook Bill did a great job. I tried to get a double burger, but he insisted I have one of each. That was all right. On the 14th, I also attended in the evening a Grand Prairie and District Catholic School reception for 16 retirees that have served the district and in Grand Prairie. On the 15th, a little brag time there, I received my 45-year, 45 years of loyal and faithful service in the Grand Prairie Knights of Columbus. And Kevin took a little wind out of my report here that his dad was noted to be a 50-year member of the Knights of Columbus. Just as a note, the Knights of Columbus have up to now done 70,000 hours of volunteer work. Just as a note, the Knights of Columbus have up to now done seventy thousand hours of volunteer work. It's... They're pretty big in volunteering in the city, so... On June the nineteenth, I attended a barbecue at Northern Metallic. This must have been the barbecue circuit. On June the twentieth, I attended the Northern Metallic barbecue at Claremont. But also, I don't know how I fit that in my schedule, but I attended the barbecue camp Little Buffalo with the RCMP. They stuck a Camp Little Buffalo hat on me and thank you, Peter Pushka. I only had half of... I only had half of a hamburger. On the twenty-first, I attended the Chamber Golf Tournament at the Dunes. On the twenty-second, I attended the Western Cree Tribal Council Golf Tournament at Spruce Meadows. I golfed with the chief from Loon Lake. He really appreciated the hospitality in the Grand Prairie area. On the twenty-third, I attended the Wagon and Guitars at Evergreen Park. And on the twenty-fourth, I attended, along with Counselor Dan Wong, the Aboriginal Day festivities to honor community in Muscah Sipu Park. Great turnout. I'll bet there was maybe five hundred, six hundred. I couldn't... They were really... They were coming in towards the later part of the day and the entertainment was terrific and good greetings on behalf of Counselor Dan Wong. And that's it, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counsel Crokin. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I attended a meeting between GPRC, Prida and CRI, Centre for Research and Innovation, just to reaffirm the partnership that the three organizations have together. Also tended the Poverty Reduction Workshop. This is, I guess, a committee that's been meeting a couple of times over the course of the last couple of months and now changing the name to Community Action on Ending Poverty. And hopefully we'll see some action coming out of the committee. Attended the barbecue at Northern Metallic for the Reading University. Got to say, there was a lot of people out there. The Northern Metallic parking lot was quite full. And then went down to hand out certificates for the graffiti wipeout recipients at the Prime Prevention Prevention Facility here in town. Ended up taking a tour of the facility. I haven't been in there since they renovated. As most of you are aware, it's the old library and that houses our bylaw departments and our enforcement services and community crime prevention. And I've got to say, they did an outstanding job there in renovating. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Monroe. Counsel Rice?
Following up on Counsel Monroe, I too attended the twenty-year anniversary for Rhonda at that building and indeed, they have done a fabulous job of renovating that. Attended the Chamber of Commerce Morning Mixer sponsored by nine-ten and learned lots of information of what's happening in the city. Attended a meeting with the Montrose Site Landscape Consultants. Attended the barbecue for Reading University and that program, the Early Literacy Program, will start July third at the Grand Prairie Regional College. Very exciting program. And I want to express my sincere thank you to council. I had the honor and privilege on June twelfth of attending the Goodwill Industries of Alberta Inaugural Awards Night. And I can think of few events I've been to in my life that were as heartwarming as that. It was just an absolutely fabulous evening and Counselor Radburn was there as well and the city's own, very own Jennifer Young was there. Her grandson was nominated in a couple of categories and it was just all around and absolutely, as I say, heartwarming experience. And I thank you for allowing me to attend that.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Counselor Wong? Oh, no. Counselor Wong, do you have anything that you missed? No?
Okay, thanks very much. Well, a number of the events that I attended have already been mentioned, so I'll try to be as brief as I can. On the twelfth, I also attended the site visit with the landscape architects who will be designing the Montrose Greenway, which will be the south of the public square area that will be developed... Sorry, the north end, immediately south of the Montrose Cultural Center. On the thirteenth, I attended the announcement at the QE II Hospital of the major donation to the foundation. Mr. Robert Scott donated three million dollars from his estate, left three million dollars from his estate to the QE II Hospital Foundation. It was noted that over the years, Mr. Scott had been a big supporter of a number of community organizations, previously the foundation, but also the SPCA and a number of others. And going through the records, they believe that he's given just shy of four million dollars. Including this three million dollar donation, his contribution to the foundation will be just shy of four million dollars. So obviously somebody who cared very much about the region and wanted to leave a legacy and obviously he's been able to do that. Later that day, I attended Ainsworth Celebration of One Year Recordable Incident Free. They're celebrating their safety record and they obviously are very proud of a milestone like that. Had an opportunity to meet a gentleman who's on the board of the company that owns Ainsworth. Had a chance to say, boy, you know, we're looking for some people that might support a test facility around OSB. And he said that he'd have somebody get in touch, so we'll see. On the fourteenth, I was at the Eastlink Center to accept a check from ATCO as they made a payment on their sponsorship at the Eastlink Center. And later that day, I was at the Community Knowledge Campus again to meet with Wynne McLean, who is the VP of Community Relations for Travel Alberta. A number of other council members were there as well. Got a chance to highlight the recent pass... Approval of our... I was going to say the recent passing, which is really sort of unfortunate term for our sports tourism strategy. The recent approval of our sports tourism strategy, which is now fully alive. And they were actually very impressed. They said that it's something that we should hold on to and not show anybody because it was so great. We assured them that it'd be up on our website and we'd be willing to share with any community that wanted to do the same. On the fifteenth, I was down in Calgary for the AUMA Mayor's Caucuses. There was a presentation from a former deputy mayor in Peace River that was very enlightening about how Alberta's economy has changed and I'll be providing a link to that to all the council members. Some interesting facts that would probably surprise you. On the eighteenth, I was back in Grand Prairie, of course, and attended Grand Prairie Regional College, a political science course to highlight some of the real-world situations that council finds and what local government is like. And on the nineteenth, I had the pleasure of representing the city at the grand opening of the new Grand Prairie Care Center, the replacement for the building which has been beside City Hall. Fantastic to see the residents there and the staff who are celebrating the opening of their new facility. And we certainly appreciate the investment that Chantelle management is making in our community to get that open. Later that day, I was also in attendance, of course, at the Aqua Terra Shareholders Meeting. And on the twentieth, I had the honor of bringing greetings to the charter meeting of the Rotary After Five, the Grand Prairie Rotary After Five Rotary Club. This is Grand Prairie's fourth Rotary Club, which is pretty significant for a community of our size. Now, Rotarians have an opportunity to attend either of two lunchtime meetings or a breakfast meeting or an evening meeting. And so, great to see the Rotary family growing in the community considering how important a community organization that they are. On the twenty-fourth, I also... Excuse me. On the twenty-first, I also attended the Chamber of Commerce Golf Tournament. And on the twenty-second, I was up early in the morning with Counselors Radburn and O'Toole and City Manager Greg to celebrate the grand opening of the Walmart Supercenter. Counsel O'Toole already mentioned it, but it's amazing that they employ about three hundred and ten, I think they said, right now and they feel that the manager feels they're about fifty people short. So when you think about the major employers in Grand Prairie, for me, it wouldn't have been one of the first names that jumps to the front of the line, but I certainly want to congratulate them on their renovation and their longstanding commitment to the community. It was nice to see the Salvation Army, the Red Cross and the Legion all recognize there. And obviously, the... Over the years, Walmart has done a lot of work with all those organizations. And, excuse me, and SPCA as well. Thank you. And then on the twenty-fifth, which was today, over lunch, I joined a number of other city staff and took a big bike ride. It was not a long bike ride, but it was a ride on a very big bike. There were about twenty-five of us and we were doing it as a fundraiser for the Heart and Stroke Foundation. That's all I had to report and if there's nothing else, then I'd call our meeting adjourned.